All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We will call our Rules Committee meeting to order. This is a sad day for our Rules Committee as our chairman is not with us, but it's one of eternity of joyful days for our chairman. And so with that, I'll ask if Representative Smith will make a comment or two and lead us in our opening prayer.
Um, I really don't know where to start. Johnny and I were close. I met Johnny the first time in 2005 when we walked into an Insurance Committee meeting together. And from that time on, pretty much about every time we saw each other, we hugged each other. And Sharon, it's okay to cry. I've cried a lot in the last week and a half. But Johnny was one of those rare breeds. But I'll tell you, I told him one day he was just a big teddy bear, and he was because he loved every one of y'all. You know, some of you didn't think that, but he did. He loved every one of y'all. You know, one of the problems, and I've mentioned this to several people, and some of y'all, Johnny and I came in at the same time, and y'all know Ed Lindsay, and he was part of that group also. I was talking to Ed after session today, and I said, you know, one of the problems we have is when people that we love, we don't tell them enough, and then all of a sudden, we can't. And Ed being, Ed, as a gracious gentleman that he is, he said, you know, I always called Johnny my friend, but I never told him I loved him. I told Johnny I loved him. I told him a lot of times I loved him, and he told me the same thing. But, you know, it's really difficult. Like I say, I've cried a lot in the last week and a half. But, you know, don't forget, tell people you love them when you see them. You know, don't ever forget. But there's something else I'd like to say about my good friend. If you want an example of Stewart leadership, you look at Johnny Meadows. He was a Marine. He was a mayor. He was a representative, and he was Rules Chairman. You know, I think if you want to put a definition of servant leadership, I think you could put his picture up there, and that's what it'd be. It's really hard talking about him because knowing Johnny, he didn't want me to probably. He said, just let me go. But it is a process, and we have to work through this process. And it's extremely difficult because, you know, we meet people in our life that, you know, really kind of like our significant emotional event in our life. Johnny was one of those to me. He'll always be a part of me, and I think he'll probably be a part of all of y'all too. But be sure that, you know, tell people you love them. It's important because, you know, we've lost two. We've recognized two this week that probably wish we could have told them one more time that we love you. So let's pray, please. Dear Lord, we come together with heavy hearts. We know that our friend Johnny is much better off, but give us strength to understand, give us strength to process this, to know that a year, two years, 10 years, we'll still think about Johnny. And at that point in time, we'll all meet together again and give each other a hug again. Forgive us, Lord, where we fail thee. Let the work that we do for this state be in your honor. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Smith, thank you. I love you.
Thank you. Okay, love you too.
And Representative Powell, although we don't have name badges, you were late, and your seat is over here. Well, I just, I don't think our chairman would allow you to sit there, but we'll make, we'll make one exception, one exception. All right. Well, we are here today to set a calendar for tomorrow, for Thursday, November 15th, and we have three measures before us. The first one is House Bill 1 EX. It's a House Committee substitute that's being offered by Chairman England. So Chairman England, if you would, give us an overview of HB 1 EX.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. Chairman Smith, thank you for those comments about our friend. It's a little bit strange being up here without looking over there and seeing the old grouch. And, you know, I've had the honor and the pleasure of serving in this body now for 14 years, and I was in that same class. Came in in 2005, and came here my first time that first year, asked for a bill, Chairman Earhart. So I'm pretty used to there's always being a grouch sitting in that chair over there. But in all seriousness, in all seriousness, I had sat down last night because I knew that if I tried to get up and say something at any point yesterday, I was not going to be able to get through it. So a lot of times, it just helps me to type something out, and many of you have probably seen something I'd placed on Facebook early this morning. And I meant what I said there, as you can imagine, but truly, if John Meadows was not greeted at the pearly gates by St. Peter and our Lord and told, "Good job. Our job well done, my good and faithful servant," I know I don't have a chance to get that greeting. So no John was to love him, serve with him, was to love him, but have him as your friend. And I think Judge Charlie Bethel put it pretty well yesterday that, you know, we come and go with friends and friendships, and a lot of times, things happen, and we lose all our friends. But the one thing about John Meadows, when you thought you'd lost all your friends, you would turn around, and there would still be one there, and that'd be John Meadows. It's, it is certainly bittersweet to be before y'all this afternoon, and I'm gonna go on before I get any worse. But you have in front of you House Bill 1 EX, the committee sub. There were some changes made in our committee, and I thank you for your indulgence while those were being printed by the Clerk's Office, the new updated substitute version from what had been on your desk yesterday. I'll walk you through very quickly what will be encompassed in the bill. Of course, there's revenue estimate adjustment upwards of just over $270 million. The Governor's Emergency Fund, due to the changes of the amendments done in our full committee just a little bit ago, that number has gone now from $50 million to $69,332, or $332,055. You'll also see the property insurance risk pools. And in your document, as you look for these different things, you will see, as I noted yesterday, you'll see a small outline box at the end of these departments where these are noted. That first will be under the Office of the Governor. The second one dealing with the property insurance risk pools will be under DOAS, Department of Administrative Services, $8.98 million there. Georgia Development Authority, which is administratively attached through the Georgia Department of Agriculture, you'll see an adjustment there now of $55 million for emergency disaster relief to Georgia farmers, $20 million in disaster relief assistance for cleanup through the Forestry Commission through the Georgia Development Authority to get that fuel off the ground, help manage insect infestations, disease infestations, as well as a public safety measure going forward should there be a wildland fire in those areas sometime in the near future. Forestry Commission Assistance, seven, just a little over $7.4 million in cash to replace some fire equipment that is aging out. They are seeing a lot of extra unanticipated usage during this time on machines that are 20-plus years old, so we know that we do need to replace those earlier than what we'd intended to. But it's also, again, a safety issue as it relates to the individuals that are on those machines. $770,000 for the Forestry Commission also on combining two of their field offices. Both of those offices were destroyed during the storm. They had already had plans in motion to replace those with one combined office. This just steps that up. Through economic development and DCA, we've got some additional funds going into One Georgia and our REBA program. And then transportation funding, recognizing some of the general motor fuel funds that have come in above budgeted numbers as far as revenue coming in above, but also to help go in to offset some of the additional expenses that have been incurred by DOT in their storm response as well. And in the original document, you would have noticed that there was an ad for Mercer University School of Medicine and the Technical College System of Georgia, Chattahoochee Tech Aviation Academy Program. Both of those, the amendment took out. So those two items were brought out. The additional money there then was funneled over into the direct, or to the farmer grant, farmer loan program, and into the Governor's Emergency Fund. Governor's Emergency Fund, the governor and staff signed off this morning on the DSNAP program, which that will incur some additional state expense, but it does go to help everyone in that southwest Georgia corner, replacement food and those kind of items that they lost due to power being out and losing food that they had on hand already. Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to answer any questions that may be.
Any members of the committee have a question of the author for HB 1 EX? Questions? No questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The next item we'll take up is the substitute to House Bill 4 EX. This deals with our timber tax and exemptions. It's LC 431049S. Representative Trey Rhodes, who's the Governor's Floor Leader, will present the overview of that bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Good afternoon. House Bill 4 EX, and I'm glad you quoted the LC number because I don't even possess that one yet, so good. This bill is a $200 million timber tax credit that can be used over a 10-year period. It's aimed at offsetting income taxes that's tied to the reforestation of these devastated areas down in southwest Georgia. The area is defined as a 28-county region in south and southwest Georgia. The tax credit will be based on timber losses from October the 9th through December the 31st of 2018. Another thing I want to make sure everybody knows is that pecan trees or pecan trees, whichever way you prefer to say that, are included in the definition of timber. So this is for our timber industry as well as our pecan industry here in the state. Also, to receive the tax credit, the replanning has to be done in the county where the devastation occurred. We wanted to make sure that the areas that were affected were the ones that were replanted. This bill also prorates the approvals. We wanted to make sure that we didn't run out of money, and that if some citizens were delayed in getting their applications in, that they didn't get locked out for not being in a certain time period. And also, if we have money left over when this window closes, if we need to reopen it, we can do that.
Chairman Powell, did you want to speak briefly to the modification with regard to the refundable credit and the benefit that those most impacted will receive?
Yeah, in Ways and Means today, we took the bill, we had done two things in the subcommittees and then in the full committee. Number one was that we wanted to make sure that, as Trey mentioned, that anybody who filed sort of towards the end of the pack didn't find out because originally, it was drafted as first come, first served. And if the entire $200 million in tax credits were utilized before you filed your application, you could be left out in the cold with nothing. So during the window of opportunity, we changed it to say that the tax credits would not be allocated until the end of the application period, and then you would take the total amount of applications, and if it were less than $200 million, then everybody would get one-for-one, but if not, it would be prorated. And if it were not fully utilized, that there would be a second application period for persons who did not make the first application. So that was the first change, major change we made. The second major change was that the original draft of the bill said that the tax credit would be transferable, which means that you could sell it. And that is something we don't normally do. We do occasionally, but that's not normally what we do. But we wanted to make sure that somebody who didn't have a profit and therefore couldn't utilize a tax credit because they had nothing to set it off against, could still monetize it by selling it. The problem with that is, is that when you sell it, you usually sell it at a discount of 10% to 20%, perhaps, and we wanted to make sure that the producers got full value for the credit. So we made this a refundable credit, which means whether you've got income or not, you get to claim it on your income tax return, and if it produces less than the amount of the credit, that the state actually writes you a check and it refunds you the additional credit.
Very good. Any other members of the committee have a question with regard to HB 4 EX? Seeing no other questions. Thank you, Representative Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are you gonna do the other one as well? I guess we have the third bill before us, which is HB 5 EX. On this bill, we're actually, we've got the, you've got two versions in front of you. You've got the version that passed committee, which is LC 431047S, and then there's a second LC number, LC 43105OS. The second one will come out as a Rules Committee substitute. It corrects two minor Scrivener errors, and that is why you have two versions of that bill before you. But Mr. Floor Leader, if you want to tell us a little bit about HB 5 EX?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This bill seeks to ratify the Governor's Executive Order that was dated July 30th of 2018 that suspended the collection of state sales tax on jet fuel beginning August 1st, 2018. This bill would extend the suspension through June 30th, 2019, which is the end of our current fiscal year. This bill coincides and also aids to help Georgia stay to be the number one state in which to do business in our country. This bill is not about a company. The question at hand is whether eliminating the jet fuel tax is a good thing for Georgia, and I think it is. We are at a competitive disadvantage to some of our neighbor states like Texas and North Carolina, who have no tax on their jet fuel. And Georgia remains the fourth highest state out of the 21 states that have major airport hubs. We're also seeing a trend where, especially in North Carolina and some of our neighboring states, their cargo loads and the amount of cargo from Amazon and UPS and FedEx, they're just going up exponentially, cheaper for them to fly into there and then to drive into some parts of Georgia. So we're starting to lose some of that business. I'll give you another example of what we think this could do. When we eliminated the sales tax on the energy from manufacturing, we saw manufacturing jobs go up by 13%. We think that will have the same effect in our airline industry here in our state. One thing that I want to make sure everybody knows and realizes is this exemption will benefit all commercial airlines and benefit all nine commercial airports in the state of Georgia. And it's our anticipation this will help create jobs all over our state.
Thank you, Representative Rhodes. And let me also go ahead and recognize Chairman Powell also to speak to a couple of the modifications that were made in Ways and Means to have the substitute before you today. Chairman Powell?
We found out in the course of subcommittee hearings that there are two different code sections that deal with executive orders on fuel. One deals with motor fuels and requires a 2/3 vote in both houses in order to ratify what the governor has done, and requires a declaration of a state of emergency before the tax can be suspended. The other code section deals with, among other things, the jet fuel tax, and does not require any finding of a state of emergency or anything more than just a majority vote in both houses. And so it was the feeling of the committee that for future suspensions of tax, that we needed to conform these two code sections and treat jet fuel just like we do motor fuels. And so we, and you'll see it in Section 1-1, that we've added jet fuel to the motor fuel section that requires 2/3 majority and a declaration of emergency, so that in the future, it'll be clear when this can be done and have a pretty high standard of what it takes for the legislature to ratify. And that was the only significant change that we made. I would point out that I would point out that this has a sunset of June 30, 2019, so if we pass this bill, it only carries over till the end of this fiscal year, and it would take an act of the legislature in the upcoming session if we wanted to continue. So this does two things. It continues the exemption that the governor did by executive order, and it clarifies what has to happen in future declarations of executive order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any members of the committee have questions about HB 5 EX from the author? Any questions on this measure? No questions? All right, so we will go ahead then and set a calendar for tomorrow, Thursday, November 15th. Let's do that. We have, again, on the Rules Committee substitute, this is LC 43105OS. It corrected two Scrivener's errors. One was a capitalization error, and the other one was a code section reference error. Those were the only two modifications. Is there a motion to approve the Rules Committee substitute, LC 40? Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Then the Rules Committee substitute has been approved. Now we'll set the calendar for tomorrow, Thursday, November 15th. The first bill will be modified open. We have a motion with regard to HB 1 EX. A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any opposed? That one will be on the floor tomorrow. The second one will be under structured rule. This is HB 4 EX dealing with the timber tax credits, LC 431049S. Is there a motion to approve? Any, a second? Any opposition on that measure? It will be on the agenda. The third item for consideration for tomorrow's floor calendar also will be under structured rule. This is the Rules Committee substitute just approved, LC 43105OS dealing with jet fuel. Is there a motion to approve? Got a move and a second? Any opposition to that one? That one will also appear on our calendar tomorrow. Again, thank y'all so much for being here and for keeping the Meadows family in your prayers.